To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seriously, they're not coming up, I guess. Call or roll call. Carlo, are you taking a couple months here?
Absolutely. I had to put in the notes Cheryl was late, too. Don't you know we operate on my time? No.
Not a call or roll call, so. Starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Schorn.
Counselperson Red Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Anything from anybody? Staff?
No, there will be any.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of June 8th, 2021. Once we've looked them over, looking for a motion.
Want to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. That'll take us to finance and budget. We have the accounts payable and the additional listing. If there's any questions, if you peruse them, you can ask. Right after, Carlo.
There's a question of blading of alleys and parks down here, it says.
Yep.
Lauris Farm and Trucking. So we do that to every gravel parking lot and every gravel alley we have.
We spray them before the chlorine comes.
Right, so do that, put the chlorine down. That's just a once a year thing, or do we just do it?
We get all the alleys, you get up there.
We actually were rocking those alleys right now. They don't know those are too big to fit those alleys. So those are done by us, and we actually did work on them today.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. That takes us to motions to adjourn business. First item under the motions to adjourn business tonight is a resolution approving feasibility study and calling for a public hearing for the 2022-2023 CIB Street and Utility Improvements. I'll give you a little introduction, Jenna. SEH has completed the feasibility study for the 2022-2023 CIB, which Jenna will present tonight. The next step is to set up a hearing date to discuss the Kohl's project and assessments. Public comments will be heard at that meeting. Staff will send out notices to the project owners within the Kohl's project area and publish twice in the local paper. Public hearing could be scheduled on the July 13th meeting. Once the public hearing has been held, the council can determine at that time if they should proceed with the 2022-23 CIB, which will need a four-fifth poll. Jenna, it's up to you.
All right. Good evening. And, um, we're through our 2022-23 proposed capital improvement project. Um, project areas include Fifth Avenue Southeast from Truck Highway 30 down to just south of Ninth Street. And we also added in a portion of water main on what we are calling the Central City or City Hall connection that doesn't, isn't under a road, but is just out here. Um, and there's a connection from First to Fourth. Um, existing conditions for Fifth Avenue Southeast. Um, we did separate it into two different segments from Truck Highway 30 to Sixth and then Sixth South. Um, because they are different widths and different ages. Um, so the Truck Highway 30 to Sixth, original date of pavement is unknown, but it's either 1957 or earlier. Um, it was overlaid at one time and that date is also unknown. Uh, it's a 44-foot wide roadway within a 66-foot wide rightway. As you guys know, this is one of our designated truck routes. Um, we do have this along our state aid designation routes. Um, and in order to use state aid funding, we will have to meet state criteria, which actually meets our city standards also. Um, as in regards to width and other things, we do just need to beef up our pavement section a little bit. Um, there is an eight-inch, uh, clay sanitary sewer. Um, and within that sanitary sewer, there are numerous restrictions. Um, like protrusions breaking in through the pipe that could cause blockages. Um, there's also a white script cracking along the pipe, which just shows that this pipe does need to get replaced. There's also a four-inch cast iron water main with a history of watering breaks. Um, as we've said on multiple projects before, four-inch does not meet fire protection standards. Um, and the history of breaks with the cast iron also um, shows that we need replacement due to our soils, our corrosiveness, um, and so upgrading the size and material. Um, there is very limited storm sewer within the area. Um, currently a 12-inch, which we will reevaluate our storm sewer uh, to meet today's standards. Obviously, being built prior to the 60s, um, the data used in the design, if it was even designed, um, sometimes it was just done, well, here's a low spot, let's throw a pipe in. Um, we don't meet standards for, um, for our storm water flow. So we will evaluate and bring all storm sewer design up to current standards. There is random areas of sidewalk or limited sidewalk within this area. And as you guys know, this, there is nothing that leads up to the elementary school, up to Bonner, so. South of Sixth. Um, this was originally constructed in 1966. As we move south, it gets later in date, but the portion just south of Sixth was 1966. It was also overlaid once at an unknown time. Um, we have a 36-foot wide roadway within 66 to 75-foot rightaway. Um, there is some PVC sanitary and some clay. So the clay would be, um, in the same, approximately the same condition as that to the north and would be slated to get replaced. Whoops. How was it for you? Okay. One click once. Okay. All right. Um, actually, can you go back?
Yeah.
Okay. Back one more. There we go. Um, so there's six-inch cast iron and eight-inch WLN water main. Um, both are materials within corrosive soils, and there is a history of water main breaks in this area. Um, so a recommendation of replacement. And again, we would upgrade this storm water system. Um, the location of this portion of the project, there are not existing sidewalks. However, just south of Ninth, there are existing sidewalks. So it would be proposed to make connections to those existing sidewalks up through this area, bringing them up to Sixth and connectivity to Bonner. So a little bit more of those recommended improvements. Um, in between Truck Highway 30 and Sixth, we would consider reducing the width of the roadway. Um, as I stated before, it is 44 feet wide. We can still meet the truck route um, recommendations by the state and actually exceed them going down to 42. Um, those two feet just give us a little more flexibility in our design with driveways. As we've touched on before, the more room we have in that boulevard, it better the outcome of those driveways when it comes to steepness and keeping the sidewalks meeting the ADI standards as well as drainage. Um, so, like I stated before, we would replace all the storm sewer, um, meeting to these conditions and data. Um, replacement of the water main hydrants, valves, and service connections. Same with the sanitary sewer. Um, and add at least sidewalk to both sides of the roadway. South of Sixth, we would maintain our 36-foot wide road. This is not the truck route. So our 36-foot wide is our standard for residential areas. Um, we would replace the entire roadway adding some drain. Um, maintain parking on both sides, add sidewalk, um, and then stay thinking for the utility replacements. So center town water main. Um, we looked into two different options here. One would be, um, so the existing water main here is a four-inch. Um, so again, does not meet standards and does not meet fire code for the strip mall here in the middle, which is the only thing that is serviced off of this line. But it does connect and meet from First up to Fourth. Um, two different options. Um, one would be what we call pipe bursting or a trenchless option. Um, where they would actually go with a breaker head and push the pipe out of the way, bringing in a six-inch main, um, the whole way. We would have to dig up at each valve location and at that service location, and then pull things, pull it through. Other option would be to fully replace, um, as in trenchless, or sorry, excavation and pull up the pavement. Um, paving, option, uh, the pavement is not in the best condition. Um, however, it could be looked at that at some point in time, perhaps the entire parking lot and alleyways need upgrading instead of just this one area over the water main. Um, so we can kind of weigh those two options. Trenchless option is just over $200,000. If we were to open trench and repave that area, it's closer to $400,000. So the paving is needed, um, but getting a more uniform section over everything um, is actually recommended. So I don't believe we have the, the resources to do all the paving needs at this time. All right, for Fifth, just get into, um, some of the costs. Phase one is that south of Sixth. It's actually recommended to do that portion first. Um, for the reason being that the section between Truck Highway 30 and Sixth needs, I believe, a little bit more analysis and input from the council, staff, and public. And we have, um, put in four different options as to what we can do in that area. Um, but giving us more time to evaluate those options with everyone and pick what is best for the community. Um, and also that being our state aid location. Um, historically on our state aid projects, we have requested an advancement from our state aid account. And, um, previously I reported that advancements were not possible. They are now opening them back up. However, to get them, you need to apply early. Um, and this would give us time to get the design done and apply for it, say, next summer or next fall in order to get the advancement approved prior to construction. Um, so phase one being south of Sixth, uh, we really only looked at one option besides a no-build option. And you can see the costs there. Um, and phase two, the first option is a 44-foot wide with sidewalks on both sides. Option B is 42-foot wide with sidewalks on both sides. Option C is also 42-foot wide, but that is taking into consideration concrete instead of a tumulus. Um, concrete to be utilized, it would be our first city concrete street. Um, concrete can be looked at for recommendation because this is a truck route. Turning movements are very common in the midway of the stretch going down Fourth. Um, and concrete holds up a lot better to truck movements, truck turning movements for future. When it comes to lifecycle costs, um, concrete and tumulus through studies have come to equal out in cost at about 35 years. Um, with replacement of the utilities, you should be able to expect 50 to 70, sometimes even 100 years on your utilities underneath. However, um, tumulus streets are usually looked at to be a 30-year fix. Um, we do push them closer to a 40 to 50, depending on our maintenance and how they're used. Um, but concrete would be known to last longer. And at that 35 years, we break even. Past 35, your concrete is technically cheaper in a physical cost. So, um, I wanted to throw that one out there as an option as this would be one of the best spots to consider concrete for the city. Phase, all right, sorry. Option D is also the, is actually a narrower section. We would remove parking on one side and we would be able to get in a, um, eight-foot wide bike trail or multi-use trail on one side of the road. Um, that would be proposed to be on the east side and connect down to Bonner. Um, so the reduced cost in the street there um, is because we would be able to reduce a little bit of the pavement. But then the change in sidewalk cost is actually, your tumulus trail is cheaper than your sidewalk. So lots of different options, things for us to discuss. Um, and which is why I wanted to move that one, um, to 2023 and, um, give us more time not only to get our finances approved through the state, but, um, also give us more time to look at all these options. Um, so with that, calculating the assessment, um, rates off of these estimates. Phase one, south of Sixth, is approximately $70.22. Um, we do reevaluate this after the bids and final assessments are based off of actual construction bids and construction, um, at the end. Phase two, as you can see, is variable due to the different width and also the fact that this is a truck route and would have a substantial pavement section compared to phase one. Um, it is recommended with our state aid funds to reduce this burden off of the property owners and just make it equivalent to phase one. Um, so although 25% of the roadway is actually more for this section since we are able to use different financing options to help um, beef up the section and to, um, and to increase that width for the truck traffic, is not seen that that burden should be put on the public that lives there just because they live there. Um, and make it comparable to phase one. Next steps. Um, upon approval of the feasibility report, we would set public hearing for the project with the property owners. And then council can vote, uh, to approve the project or to deny. Upon approval, we would start the topographic survey, go into street design, and construction document preparation. I do recommend not bidding these two phases together. The reason for that is with our state aid funds, we will have different requirements for wage rates and, um, and we will get different bid prices. If we bid both phases together, we will be required to keep those wage rates on both phases. So we should be able to, um, potentially save some money by separating them um, and not put those more stringent requirements on the entire project. So with that, it would be recommended to bring forward phase one, south of Sixth, uh, this winter and bid it in the spring, preferably by February, um, and start construction. At the same time, though, since there is a lot of details to work through and choices to be made for phase two, we would like to get started on it and work through that with all of you to make the best decision for the community. Um, and then finish up the construction documents early, getting our state aid approvals and ask for that, um, the funding early enough to get approved prior to the other cities that will be asking for advanced funding. Um, and bid that in fall of 2022. Um, hopefully securing in better bids, bidding in the fall, but also getting those approvals in time for that state aid review. Any questions?
Just for numbers for people when we get to those meetings. Are they going to be given the option of having everything underground like we did on this project?
We have already talked with the peoples, um, regarding this project and people's wants to put everything underground. We do see that we would probably be able to accommodate that without the need for the easements.
You know, I mean, just so we have a number for the homeowners when we get to the hearings and stuff.
A number for, oh, from peoples?
Yeah.
Bad additional cost, do you mean?
Uh-huh.
A bad additional cost.
Bad additional cost.
Yeah. If they're, you know, so they can make the decision if they want.
Yep. Uh, we can have an estimated cost from people of what that would be.
Jenna, since this is like, since Fifth is going to the school, isn't there some state money available for sidewalks?
Um, they've changed up that program a bit. Um, and there, there is safe routes to school money out there. The program, though, has been working more with the school districts on how to, um, make that happen. I could definitely look into that funding source to see if we could also apply that, at least on the state aid one. If we were to do that south of Sixth, again, that would kick in the different wage rates and criteria because we'd be using state money. Um, so estimate there. I did want to touch base on, wrong house, on our different financial or financing. Um, we had at one point, or at least I had at one point considered this for, um, to apply for that LRIP funding. However, with our other two projects that we applied for, decided three was a bit too many, um, and we did not apply for this one. Um, but at the same time, with making that, that recommendation and knowing that information, I did know that the state was opening up our abilities to, to, um, pull money early, so, um. So different, some additional financing options for this. Obviously, we have the state aid money and advancement um, to help reduce the costs for our property owners and for the city themselves on both the impact of this truck route improvement. Um, there is also, sorry, my report's a lot longer. Trying to get to the bottom. Um, just want to make sure I use the right funding name. So the COVID money that is coming from the feds, um, for the American Rescue Plan, those funds are eligible to be used on infrastructure. So water main, sanitary sewer, and I believe roads are all, um, possibilities for funding. I know that there are many uses out there that we could use them. Um, however, utilizing those and our state aid funds could make it so we do not have to bond this project.
Right, Jenna, right now the roads are not considered as part of that, just infrastructure.
Just the infrastructure.
But the one thing that they have said based on the townships and the smaller communities, they thought that may change going down the road because people aren't going to be able to spend it otherwise, especially for your counties and your townships.
Maybe you can name that for famous person, the state.
So I do know there's a lot of different places to put those funds. Um, just, this could be an option to utilize it and not have to bond. Um, and then in addition to both those other two funds, um, then we do have our assessments, as we talked about, that I would recommend not assessing in between Truck Highway 30 and Sixth at a higher rate than Sixth and so. Any other questions?
Josh. You're fine. Okay. All right. We're going to recover to Jenna, thank you. Counselwoman Akshana will be to adopt resolution 2021-Resolution Receiving Feasibility Study and calling public hearing on the 2022-2023 Street Utilities Project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Hold, hold it, stop, hold everything. What?
We'll forward a hard copy to anybody that wants, and then we'll have one on display for public, um, as the news gets out for their review, so.
Sounds good. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. So we set a public hearing next meeting?
For July 13th.
That's what we're going to have, is July 13th?
That's what Jenna and I talked about, doing it July 13th.
So is that included in this? Motion, or we got to make a separate one? All right. All right. Look at that, Karen. American Rescue Plan. Holy God.
It's hardly a plan to help anything out when you got to wait four years or five years to figure out where you're spending it. What is the deal?
Okay.
Trying to give us flexibility and longer time to handle it.
We're flexible. American Rescue Plan Act and Resolution to Accept ARPA Funds. The Minnesota Management Budget CRA Office is administering the American Rescue Plan Act funds and eligibility for cities under 50,000. We have applied for the funds that will be distributed after July 1st, 2021, and July 1st, 2022, after each year. A specific amount is not yet available. We may exceed 75% of our 2020 preepidemic budget, which will be approximately 100. We may exceed 75% of our 2020 pre-pandemic budget, which will be approximately $100 to $105 per capita. These funds can replace revenue that was lost due to the pandemic, respond to public health emergency, improve infrastructure. Funds must be decided by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. Shouldn't be a problem. Council actually requested, unless you got any questions or anything about it, to adopt Resolution 2021, a resolution to accept the coronavirus, a local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act. Do we have a motion? That sounds pretty official.
I'll make that motion.
One second, make a motion in a second to accept this money. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've accepted it. God help us all.
Yeah, what we'll do is either you can elect to have a separate workshop just on these dollars coming in and where you'd like to see them go within parameters, or when we start our budget workshop session, we can tie in this part of it with our overall budget proposals.
So you got to make decisions on money that'll be spent three years from now, basically?
Yeah.
Well, no, you don't have to, you don't have to have that money spent until the end of 2024, but decide upon it until 2024, spend until 2026, so.
What is government to split everything up?
All right, that takes on the mayor's staff and consult reports. Tonight, the mayor's report, City of Stewartville sent their sympathies to the family of Nancy Henke, Kenneth Sheldon, Earl Kruger, Mildred Allen, Kurt Wibben, and Patricia Benoule. And I'll tell you, tomorrow night's the next concert, Wednesday night at Oakwood Amphitheater. If you didn't make it last week, it was a great turnout, it was a great time, wasn't it, Brett?
That's right.
I was there, dancing all night, you had to come to see that. They had a great time, it was a great concert, a large variety of every age group there was, there was kids to even people over the median, people out there having a real good time, a good evening. You know, we got to thank a lot of people, we got the Stewartville Foundation, we got the Chamber, we got all these people, but, and they all had the vision to ask for this and do this, and I'd like to thank this council for every vision to help move forward on this project, because so far it's been well-accepted by the community, and I think it's going to get just bigger and better. So you guys can pat yourself on the back for that one. Good thinking, guys. All right, I can do that. With that, Summer Fest is on its way, almost here, ready to go. It's going to be an exciting time, this is, we missed it last year, we're going to make it good this year. It's going to be at Barricade Park for the first time, big, big deal out there. Chamber board has been working hard on making this very special because we lost it last year, so anyone and everyone that wants to volunteer, don't be afraid, you get ahold of somebody from the Chamber and volunteer to help. This is making just that much better for everyone, that must warm a fun time for everyone. Let's hope for nice weather, you know, it's been raining every day, so let's hope for some dry weather. That's all I've got, I guess, and kind of got to thank the staff again for all the hard work they've been doing around here, they keep the city looking good through our public works, running well through our city hall, and everybody's having a good time putting the kits together and reading books at the library, so.
I got to thank everybody for the hard work.
That's top secret this week, is probably just.
We'll get to that. That's all I got for my report. Now, city administrator, Bill, your report?
Yep, report's in your packet, just to highlight a couple items quick. We got started on the comp plan at our first initial kickoff meeting with our engineering staff, CETA staff, and so we'll be putting together a schedule of how that will develop over this next year. Then a special thanks to the SEH staff, Jenna and Dave Kruger, they helped us put together a bonding bill application, if you will. Basically, now the state makes you put together an application to apply for bonding line. So we at least got that in on time, and now we'll work with the legislators to help support that through. And then, speaking of the Chamber and the Summer Fest event, any of you are invited to come out to Bear Cave, end of the trail between the two parks at 9:30 tonight. They're going to do a little promo video to highlight the lighted path, because this is the first year using Bear Cave, we anticipate folks who want to use the path coming back and forth, and it's just to show that it's lighted, well-lit, and it can be a mode of pedestrian transportation, if you will, to the park, so. It's just a promo video that the Chamber will put out to assure people that it is a avenue to use, if you want to be a star.
You're bad too, we also forgot, and you did two, now, and you have a big thank to the Lexi too, she's put a lot of work and effort into this concert series, and it's turning out really well. So thank you, Lexi, remind.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the administrator? Go ahead, Bill.
That's your door.
Okay, this is the finance director, Carla.
Just, we're almost halfway through the year, so we're going to start on budget planning for 2022, coming up here shortly. Been putting in a lot of time, I've been listening to a lot of webinars, trying to figure out, with the American Rescue Plan Act, just trying to figure out exactly what we can use the funding for. Went through a whole afternoon of figuring out what our revenue loss was, they had a whole Excel file calculator for everything to figure out then what we can use that for, because then we have a lot more flexibility if it's considered a revenue loss, taking a lot of time with that. That and Megan and I worked on getting the GFOA award certificate, all that information into the state for 2020.
All right, any questions for Carla? All right, thank you, Carla. Public Works, Sean?
Just going to point out on the report there, I know Josh has an interest in the ponds, that we are putting copper sulfate in those now, we have started a program, we're trying to do it, we're ramping up slowly, because if we put that in too fast, you know, oxygen depletion and have fish kill, if there are fish in some of the ponds. So we are building it up slowly to get to that point, so that we don't reach that level. So, other than that, prepping for the fourth, starting to get some stuff done for that next week, we'll be spending more time on that. The volleyball courts have been started out in Bear Cave, so that third one that was approved at the park room meeting has been dug out, we're going to be putting sand in there this week on that.
I want to add that that's a donation from the volleyball league, if you will, to help the park board out with that, so.
Trail's kind of scheduled to be done by the fourth.
Yeah, they're doing that as part of this Main Street, so Thursday, Friday, they're going to put the first coat down here for the base layer, because they got to do that in three different lifts, and then they'll go hit the trails, so it'll be done by the weekend.
Oh, good, cool. Any other questions for public works director, Sean? All right, Sean, tell the guys, thanks. Now they might have to mow a little bit again after rain, huh? Get a little breather.
It still isn't coming too fast.
Yeah. All right, city engineer, Jenna, you got anything else to report?
Our road closure and detour, I believe, has been working very well. They did get the underground work within Truck Highway 63 completed last night. They finished at about 3:00 AM, went home, came back around, new, and to keep working today, so. As Sean mentioned, they're proposing to get the roadway paved Thursday and Friday. There is a potential for rain. If we do get rain that impacts that paving, the road should be open by Monday for sure. So just be aware of those construction zones, but it did go very well last night, and really thank Alcor for their planning ahead to make everything go so well.
All you guys, Alcor and SEH and our public coordinator, but you did a fantastic job getting that done when I wake up.
You're in a really good mood today.
Special thanks to Sean too, he went to visit with the businesses, because they've obviously been concerned about the detouring, so he's been working with Alcor to try to keep those access points open, and then Alcor certainly encouraged folks, you can come around from the backside if you feel you can't get there from off of 63, but they're trying to do what they can to leave all those business access points, at least one avenue on one end or the other open for them.
And we're definitely trying to minimize the impacts to 63 to as short as possible, so. With that, the construction keeps going first is actually the last of their underground work that they need to do. Once they are done on first, then we will be looking at getting all the pavement back. From last year's portion of the project, we do know that all the services for power lines, for power have been rerouted, and we should be able to see power poles coming down fairly soon. We do need to get an update from peoples on their schedule for that, though, and then we will have our sidewalks connected, so should be seeing curving better in the near future. We also met with county last week and got it verified that, yes, we will get 10th or CASA 35 turned back to us, so we're working through what that agreement will actually look like. They are going to turn it back to us, so we do.
They keep the bridge, right?
They keep the bridge, yes. So, which will open up our abilities for growth along that, in that direction. Both been meeting with various developments, developers and site plans, so there's a lot going on in Stewartville that's keeping us very busy.
Yeah. Stay around, Doug. Thank you. Okay, top secret, we've been waiting for it all night, classified report for Nate, the library director.
Can I tell you how great it is that we live in a world where you can order a red, it's top secret, classified stamp in the mailroom, it just shows up, like.
You can get away with anything, man.
Yeah, they're not even that expensive, it's awesome.
I get letters from citizens that say, "Top secret classified, in your eyes only."
So, it's, at the library, this is our big one, this is Spy Week, which entails four different kits. We had 270 of 280 of those claimed already, and it's, it's been getting busters. Just to give you a quick rundown on what those four kits are, this one with the cool stamps on it is our code-breaking kit. It has a couple different, it has a cipher wheel in it, as well as like, well, yeah. There is a notebook where you can write in, and it has a red pen and a light blue gel pen where you can write a message and then reveal what the message is through.
This is like your Mazuka Joel secret. Remember to drink your Omati.
What? I, I wouldn't even know. So the secret messages, I, I found like a bunch of different spy codes that I liked, and, and so like the secret message in this one is, "The life of spies is to know, is to be, is to know, not to be known," from George Herbert. So, you know, like there are different spy people in each one.
Now Nate, Nate, you do know if this is actually top secret classified stuff, you got a reporter in the room.
I know, it's not. I, you know, put, yeah.
I feel like Brad Lightwood is close.
He's white for.
It's, it's black, it's a very interesting issue.
On with my show and talent, we have Morse code bracelets, so that they have specific color-coded beads in each one, as well as the Morse code alphabet, so you can put your name or any kind of message you wanted on the bracelet.
I don't know if it's such a good idea to have any message.
No, I think that's the thing, with the dark side of the alphabet. Then, this is actually relative, well, I mean, this is probably the sketchiest thing you can get for the Boy Scouts of America, they, they have a periscope kit that we got super reasonable, reasonably priced with this wooden periscope kit families can assemble. This is the only kit, we went one per family, just because it was a little more expensive than the other ones, but it's, it's still not crazy. And then, the last one that I'm probably proudest of is our invisible ink kit. And the invisible ink is, we used a different, usually like the recipe that you're probably more familiar with is like lemon juice, and that's just not that good. What's that?
That's why I used it.
Yeah, yeah, all their secret, you know, correspondences. This one uses turmeric and, and rubbing alcohol for the revealer, and then baking soda and water for the ink, and it kind of, it's kind of cool because it does like basically like Stewartville colors when you reveal it, it's like a reddish ink with a yellow background, and, and I got this one, you're going to love this, you know, I got this one from a website called The Art of Manliness.
We have to filter against internet.
My web history tells the story. And, yeah, so these have been going like gangbusters, and people seem pretty happy with them so far. First week of kits went really, really well as well, you know, the hundreds of planes or cars dipped out of the library really quickly, and then those airplanes, I still was shocked at how popular those were too, the paper planes. So it's going really well, we got a lot of kids sign up, checked out a lot of books, overall circulation patterns have kind of returned to pre-pandemic levels and normalcy. During the pandemic, we, during the, you know, with quarantine and everything else, we were, became a net lending library, as we're having, as the library's being used by a lot of people from other communities whose libraries were less open, and that's been kind of returning to normal, and we're actually now mowing more books than we're mowing libraries, which I think says the nice things about our collection that I like to say about our collection. So, yeah, I think we're doing pretty well.
You only got 10 of those kits left?
What's that?
You say you only got 10 of those left?
I have 10 of these left.
Put one on for Ava, it'll be Brent coming to get it. He's going to save it for Ava, he's been bringing it the whole time. All right.
You want the secret messages?
Yeah, it's what you need, a secret message kit. Any other questions for Nate? Sounds like you're having a good time, doing a good time down there, Nate, thank you. Go fire chief, we have a report, we have a year to make, this monthly report is in here, it belongs to pool flyer. So if you've read through the report, these attendants, hours, what's going on, even if you're placing six timeframes for morning to at night for swim lessons, water aerobics, gives you a pretty good breakdown of the pool for this month, for this last month, which I find pretty interesting, there's already been 7,292 patrons there since they opened June 7th. Yeah, that's crazy.
And then he'll, he'll be at your next meeting, so he wanted you to get this first, so that if you have questions for him, then he can work with you directly.
So, any questions on the pool director report? All right, now take this committee commission board report, send, thank you. Chamber of Commerce, you've got their Summer Fest lineup in the packet there, and they've got it out, it's been in the paper, it'll be in the paper, Al, anything you want to add or anything?
Did we get that power upgrade upgraded? We checked on it today, Matt Bow, the, we have done the extension on it, Matt Bow said, called, or he said they'd have shipped parts, so we should be okay. Anna come in yet? He makes it seem like he'll be out there doing it, as soon as they come in, they'll ship it here and go.
Okay.
How many of them are volunteers?
Oh, they always have them for volunteers.
Yeah, there's a lot to, a lot of openings.
They're trying to like tour our shifts, but obviously we get more folks to help out, we shortened those shifts a little bit, but I'd give Jared a call, if he can help out, I think, you know, the master list.
I can send you, there's a signup, an online. I can send you, there's a signup, an online signup link and I can send that to you and then you can see everything that's available and we can just sign right up there, but there's quite a bit of luck. There's a lot for the dance.
Yeah, we got a new venue and everything, but just not sure where we're going to eat so we're really breaking it up, but we learned a lot just with the concert out there last week and stuff, so just come along.
The fencing will be put up next Wednesday. The Settlers of Service will be here, which they've always assisted us with, so next week's concert will have fencing around.
I have no idea that.
The test run for the forum, but, because they, that's the only day they can get in to do it, so it'll be a few, couple days earlier than we normally would, but it's not going to hurt anything and we can use it just like a concert for it.
This sounds good. All right. Thank you. EDA HRA, meeting last week, nothing to report. Finance? Library?
Nothing.
Secret, I suppose. Park board?
We met last week out at Bear Cave and Sean already touched on the expansion of the volleyball courts and we are going to get a carport thing for the Dodge Park, so there's a shakeout there.
I was just, under the amphitheater update, I was wondering, are the picnic tables, are they going to be there before the fourth or not?
No.
Probably not.
No. In fact, we were in benches a while ago hoping they'd be here because a couple of were throughout that area and they aren't going to be here for a while. Everything's delayed because of.
I was curious.
Anything else from the park board? That's all. Okay. Thank you. Personnel? I guess we know. Planning zoning?
I would be in July.
Public safety? Public works? Ready?
No report.
Room call?
No report.
Stu, 180?
No updates.
There's one we're waiting for. Transit Advisory Committee?
No report.
You're back to 100 on that day again. All right. Communications, nothing tonight. Anybody here adjourned? Oh, we got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.